Good morning. I'd like to call to order the City of Calabasas Special Council Meeting of December 15, 2023. I'm joined by Mayor Protem Kraut, council members Albrecht, Bazagian, and Shapiro, as well as staff. If you wish to provide public comment, please complete a speaker card located on the front table indicating whether you're speaking during regular public comment or on an agenda item and give it to our city clerk, Mari Hernandez. You will be allowed three minutes to address the city council on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Today, I would like to ask our city manager to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mari, are there any members of the public wishing to speak on items not on the agenda?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. We have three items on the agenda today, but we are most likely not going to get through them because we are going to, this workshop is going to end promptly at noon. Oh, wait, actually, sorry. I'm going to go back. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay, we met in closed session. Oh, wait, do we have to? Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to go back to our closed session report when our city attorney comes. We'll start with announcements. Mayor Protem Kraut?
Nothing tonight, today, this morning.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Nothing.
Councilmember Bazagian?
Nothing.
Councilmember Shapiro?
Nothing.
And I also don't have anything to add. And right, Mari, you confirmed there are no members of the public wishing to speak on items not on the agenda.
Correct, Madam Mayor.
So as I was saying, we have three items on the agenda, and this special meeting is going to end promptly at 12:00. So we will, we have two options, and I just wanted to get feedback from my fellow council members. We can start on item number one, and most likely will not get through it, or we can start with item number three. And I'll look to the subcommittee, since you worked so hard on item number one.
Okay, you want, you just want general comments?
Yeah, I just want to know, do you want to start on item one, knowing we might not get through it?
Well, yeah.
Or go to item three?
We need to go to number three first, I guess, if we're really not going to finish this. Two and three. Two should be relatively quick, I would think.
But I wanted to leave it to the subcommittee.
I mean, we're not, we got to get to two and three, so we got to do those first.
Mayor Protem?
That's fine.
Okay. Kendon, do you have any feedback?
No, Mayor. So you'd like to start with items two and three? Is that the order we'd like to begin with?
Well, we'll have to have a motion to change the agenda, but I wanted to hear from the subcommittee first, if they were okay starting with item number one but not finishing it, or if they would rather do items two and three.
We have to do two and three, so we just have to finish those, even if those take all the, all the time.
All right, is there a motion to change the order of the agenda?
I'll start with two and three, two, three, one.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we are now joined by our city attorney. We met in closed session prior to this meeting. Does our city attorney have anything to report?
Yes, thinking about it, Mayor, apologies. We met in closed session and considered two items. One regarding the existing litigation TNHC Kenyon Oaks LLC versus City of Calabasas. Staff provided, or council provided direction to staff and council, but took no reportable action. Second, we considered a claim filed by Mary Sue Maurer, and thereto took no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you for the update. So now we will move on. We will move on to item number two, which is review and approval of the 2024 city council meeting schedule. And our city manager, Mr. Meek, will present.
And Mayor, if we, I can, Mari, do you want to start with this item on the calendar?
Sure, sure. So, Madam Mayor and councilmembers, you have the calendar for 2024 in front of you. We've added some special meetings which would be used for budget discussion and other, to compensate for other meetings that are being canceled in the summer or the holidays. So we're looking for council discussion and consideration of a calendar and whether you guys are available to attend those special meetings.
I'll start with Ed.
I've looked at the entire schedule including holidays. I'm perfectly okay with this.
Peter?
I'm available for all of those dates.
James?
I'm available. I would note that my understanding is these are reserved dates, but may not necessarily be used, correct?
If they're not needed, they won't be used, correct?
Okay, and then the other thing is, I would note that we're not canceling very many meetings this year compared to what we normally cancel, so hopefully we won't need every single one of these special meetings. But I'm available.
Great, thank you. And I provided to Mari, I'm not free on April 3rd, and I'm not sure about the 19th. And I wanted to know if anyone would be open?
Nineteenth of what?
June, I'm sorry. June 9th, June 19th, I'll let Mari know shortly. June 12th is the last day of school, and we're always running around to different graduations. So my recommendation is either we keep that a very light meeting and start later, or do it a different day that week. We always run into issues that day. So that was my only question about a date.
And Mayor, on that date, that would likely be the date that we're finalizing budget discussions. So my recommendation to council is that Mari and I pull the council for another option for that week.
Great. And David, when you're ready? Okay.
Go ahead. I can start, but I'd prefer to have another minute if I could.
I'll just make one comment while you're preparing, then. For the month of June, we have three meetings now, the 12th, the 19th, which is a special meeting, and the 26th. And I think compared to last year's schedule, our budget process was a little smoother than this. I don't suspect we're going to need all of those with the June 19th date. I think flexibility on the June 12th start time should be available.
Okay, I will go ahead. Thank you. The April 3rd, you indicated was not available for you, Madam Mayor, correct?
Correct.
Okay. There's a couple, you're just asking about special meetings at this point, not all meetings?
Correct, because the other ones are regular meetings.
Okay.
Those are regularly scheduled meetings.
There's two dates of regular that I know are at issue for me, but I'll deal with that with an email to everyone, I guess. May 29th, which is fine, is the day after Memorial Day weekend and Memorial Day itself, just to give a heads up for if that matters to anyone. And as mentioned, you already mentioned last day of school. Other than that, as mentioned also, we have a lot of regular meetings with very few canceled. We normally have less, certainly in the fall. So I'm fine with this. April 3rd was a question for me, but the regular meetings, I will email questions of my availability, the April and May meetings in particular.
Great. Are there any other further questions? Is there a motion to approve this item?
Motion to approve June 19th as a regularly scheduled council meeting in lieu of June 12th.
Or I think what, Kendon's going to provide us possibly another date, a day of, in the week for June 12th, the week of June 12th. We can approve it as is with modifications, that we approve modifications presented by the city manager? Would that be appropriate?
Yeah, that's fine.
And Madam Mayor, just to be clear, April 3rd, we're taking off the calendar, correct?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor? Oh, wait, are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now we're going to move on to item number three, review and provide direction on the prioritization of future agenda items, provide direction on future agenda items to be referred to council committees or city commissions. Our city manager, Kendon Meek, will provide a presentation.
Mayor and councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity to discuss with you the future agenda items that we have pending. Overall, council, this fits into a much bigger discussion, and we won't move into that discussion at this time. As staff and as we've met with the council members, one of the things that we recognize is there is a number of competing methods by which the council is directing their attention and their efforts. We have before us tonight the future agenda items. We have a work plan, there's committee meetings, there's requests from our commissions, and we have a request from our constituents, the public, that we need to address. And then there's the regular day-to-day work that is required that the city maintain an excellent standard on. Again, that's a bigger picture of what's happening. Today, we'll focus just on the future agenda list and looking for direction from the council on how to move forward on this. We, in preparation of this meeting, we did send out a list of all of the items that were on the future agenda list in the council packet and had the council prioritize those. And that was provided to you as part of this, this presentation, where those rankings sat. Now, with that, and it's also, and we'll go into that, since that time, however, council, there's been three items that have been brought to the future agenda item list. And so I do want to take those into account if there is interest from the council to have those included. That would be a discussion at an early meeting in January regarding public comment on Zoom. As the council is aware, I suspended the Zoom participation after some of our unfortunate incidents just a couple months ago, but there is a request to consider resuming with Zoom and allowing public comment in that forum. There's also, on the future agenda list, a request from council members to look at our development code, but also specifically in regards to open space. And then there was a request to look at possible areas for potential parks. So as we move through this presentation today, council, what we would like to do is, again, look at the existing rankings, see if there's any way to incorporate some of these three additional items. But also, this gives a chance or the opportunity for the council to determine if there are any items that we would like to remove from this future agenda list. Again, with the understanding that we're coming back with discussions on a work plan and other items for 2024. As the council is aware, two of our council members are able to put an item on the future agenda for consideration. We requested that the council prioritize those, and naturally, it fell into three different groups. And I just listed these as Group A and Group B, Group C. So the first one that you have in your presentation and also on the screen shows those items on the, on the list that scored anywhere between 1 and 50 points. Now, the scoring was done in such a way that the lower the points would be the higher the priority. So if council members identified an item as priority number one for them, or priority number two, number three, number four, number five, so on, the lower the points would be the higher the priority. So in this instance, the earthquake insurance came in at 18 points. You can see the scoring across.
Kendon? I'm so sorry to interrupt. Oh, I see, never mind, right here.
Do you have it in your presentation?
Right, but it's this, this one is A. Okay, thank you.
Does everybody have that in their packets? Okay. So the priorities Group A, the highest scoring was for the staff to return with a follow-up on the earthquake insurance at 18 points. You can see where it being the highest priority for councilmember Albrecht, Albrecht, and then for councilmember Bazagian and Weintraub, five and six. So it, five and six on their list, but a total score of 18. And we'll go through there and look, and you could see then on down the list to tennis and swim center operations update coming in at 49, just below that 50. So this would give us the top about eight items in Group B. I'm going to go through each group and just summarize those real quickly, and then we'll come back and discuss about, open it up for discussion on either amending these or changing the priorities. Group B, again, these are items that scored between 50 and 75. This is kind of a mid-range priority, and you can see the scores, they're fairly grouped within the 50s and 60s with a few outliers at 70 and 75. And then Group C, were the items that scored above 75 and all the way up to above 100. As, again, most of these are grouped within the 80s, with the outliers being the discretionary accounts at 108. So those are the three groups that came in with the rankings that were given. Again, these do not include the most recent additions that I mentioned at the early, in the early part of the discussion. So as we move forward, what we would like to do is just determine how we might best address the future agenda items. Based on some research, research that Mari and I did, we were able to move off of the future agenda items list or handle, on average, about one, maybe one and a half item on the future agenda list per month. So in the calendar year of 2023, we, we had about 10 items or so that we were able to, 10 to 12 items that were on the future agenda list that we addressed and got direction and were able to move forward or finalize those. Again, this is in part because we have interests that we're dealing with, or items that are the day-to-day operations of the city, we have contracts, we have parks and projects and other things that are being discussed. And so just on the timing-wise, we were able to get through maybe on average, one a month, maybe a little bit less. And so as we look at this list here with, you know, currently 34, if we look at that average, it would really take us about three years to get through this if we didn't lump those all together in, in meetings to get them off. Again, some of these items might be at the council's pleasure to move to a work plan, move them off completely, so they're just not as important as they might have been in the past. But what we're looking for is that unless directed by the majority of the council, we would start moving forward with the priority groups as they are presented and as they're ranked. Anything that would follow after this point would be, fall at the end of the line. Now, that could always be changed by a vote of the council. The council has the option of, by a majority, to move any item on the future agenda list to a priority or an immediate action. But what we would recommend that unless directed, those immediate future agenda items that would come, starting in January, would be put on the, at the end of the list. And then items necessary to conduct the business of the city would be scheduled prior to any future agenda items. Again, we have to have precedent on some of those operating functions of the city. Some discussion items that we can consider is, is there a direction on the items as prioritized? Are there items on the future agenda list that we would like to remove? And should any of the items be referred to a council committee or city commission before they return to the council? That would be some of those options that we could discuss today. And that, Mayor, concludes the presentation, so I'd be happy to answer any questions or if the council would like to provide thoughts and comments, and then we can dig into the details after that.
On a point of information, the, on priorities Group B, we've already agendized and discussed cannabis survey results.
Correct.
So that should be off.
Before we go to council discussion, are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Back to, James, do you want to start?
Yeah, I mean, I just have, in addition to my comment about that one item that we've already discussed, two other things. First, I don't expect that when items come up that we don't even know about, that, that obviously city business, we shouldn't use this priority list to exclude other items from being there. For example, the council heard about airplane noise, deferred it to the meeting in January where our staff is going to be working on a report. That's not on here, but I'm assuming that's coming back. Things like that in the normal course of things. The other thing is timeliness. For example, on, on Section B, there's a, the Business Roundtable Tax. One of the reasons why I didn't rank it higher was because we don't really need, you know, we didn't really need to take a position.
We have more time.
We have more time, but, but some of these are going to expire in relevancy. Like, if we don't get to this by, you know, August of next year, then we might as well just not even do it. And I think it's an important enough thing where we should get to it. So I don't mind it staying in priorities Group B, but if we're not there yet, it needs to leapfrog ahead. Things like that with a, with a deadline. Other than that, I agree with some of the comments that you've made, Kendon. I think that some of these are ripe for subcommittees or commissions, but otherwise, I would keep this, I think you guys did as good a job as you could in prioritizing based on the average results.
Peter?
First, I'd just ask a question. Why Group A, B, and C? Why not just take them in the actual order they received? Is there a purpose of the grouping?
No, just as the scores came in, it just kind of fell within that. And we could take it right down the list, just based on numbers one through 34, whatever that is. Again, it was just very simple to kind of see it how they were grouped by the scores. It doesn't change the priority at all.
And then, I think my, my comment as far as sending these to our commissions, I think it's a great idea. I think if we do so, we'll need to select which ones we're really willing to relinquish some, I don't want to say authority, but if we're going to send it to the commission, we, we're asking for their direction and opinion, and we really need to listen to it. The idea of doing so would eliminate a lot of these items from our council meeting or reduce them to a very short discussion. So I would just say that if we're going to do that, let's, let's really do that. Let's ask our commissions to give us some direction here. And then when it comes back to us at council, perhaps it could even, many of them could go on to consent. But I'll leave it to my fellow council members to make recommendations of which ones they're more willing to let go of than others.
David?
Thank you, and thank you for this report. I just want to make a quick comment. I appreciate this, and I'm looking at the numbers attributed. I remember filling this out, and then actually Kendon reminded me that I had missed a few of the items, so some of my scores may not accurately reflect, rather than going back through and renumbering all the items. I think I did some add-on, so I do want to say that. Another question, the original comment said agenda item, two or more council members. Also, and it didn't necessarily happen this year for me, but isn't the mayor, the way we've always done it, mayor or the city manager also entitled to put something on the agenda without two council members in our past? And I'll, I'll look to James and Kendon, who've been on council, James on council certainly longest.
I, I think that was reflecting of if we pass the change in the protocols.
Got it, okay.
If we don't, then it goes back to the mayor or to council members.
Okay, great. I'm sorry?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, all right. The only thing I was going to say is with regard, quick comment with regard to the priorities, let's say I'm going to take one right off the bat. Number two, the public, in order, public safety evacuation routes, HOA grants. Happy to have it go to council, but if something like that is going to be put to the Public Safety Commission or Committee, the only thing I would add on to Mayor Protem Kraut's comments is that we make certain it comes back in a very timely manner to council. Something on Ledger C, which may have a lower priority and can wait till June or August, is fine, but higher priority items as for this, this grid that we have in front of us, if we're sending them to a committee, the higher priority items should get back to council in a very timely manner. That's it, thank you.
Ed?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm very happy the way this worked out. City manager, I really liked the priority list that you put, were able to facilitate and give us a better view of what we all feel. I particularly, I remember talking about this when I first came to council, and that is to get the commissions involved. That's a big deal. And Protem Kraut has mentioned that, and I've got four particular items I think that are very important. The, certainly, public safety would be great for Public Safety Commission, the full-time security guard, public safety, special events, there's some really cool, the cyclovia, cyclevia event for pre, and then the swimming tennis for pre. But as Councilman Shapiro mentioned, it's got to be timely, because these commission meetings are quarterly, and maybe we can discuss how they can facilitate a meeting, prepare for the meeting, and have it expedited much sooner. So we can actually possibly, as mentioned, put it on consent and get through future agenda items much quicker. We can really make some progress. That's my comment.
I have a few comments. My first one is, I think it's great. This is such a weird setup, I can't see Kendon. So I think sending stuff to commissions is a good idea, but the problem is how infrequently they meet. So I'm afraid if we delegate all of these priorities in Group A, it's going to be months and months before they come back to the council. So I wanted to get your feedback on that.
And Mayor, that is one of the items that we thought about as staff. Now, we always have the option of calling special meetings for our commissions, and that could be done, especially if an item is on, let's say, a higher priority, we can move that quicker through a special meeting, depending on the availability of the commissions. But it is doable.
So when does the public safety and the, when does public safety meet again? I think Mari might.
Do you have that, Mari?
I knew she was checking.
Well, Mari's looking that up. So for example, with the earthquake insurance, we've already had that discussion, so we're really waiting just for the numbers to come back. I would recommend that that doesn't need to go to a commission, for example.
So how about we go through this list on what the council would want to go to commission and what we would want to keep at council? Just, and then I have a few more questions for you. So earthquake insurance would go to council. The next item, public safety? Or a subcommittee? I know Mike Dyer's done a ton of research on that one, so how would you want to proceed?
That would be public safety.
Commission?
Yeah, I mean, it could go to a commission for input and then come back to council very quickly, I think. It's, it's wrapped up almost.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, real quick, I have an answer for you. Public safety is meeting on February 5th.
Okay, and what about pre and environmental?
Pre meets on January 8th.
Great.
Environmental, let's see.
They just met.
Okay.
But would we be able to get one of these items, a staff report ready for the pre by January 8th?
I'm not sure.
Okay, so when do they meet after January 8th?
And Mayor, the only reason I mention that is, right now, we're consumed with opening the community center, and so I wouldn't want to try to add
Okay.
a staff report for that.
Okay, so what about number three, ordinance adding chapter 5.22, provision of security by commercial retailers to the Calabasas municipal code? Wasn't that ready to come back to us?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I think that one is ready. Soon, will be ready soon for the council.
Okay.
We had a productive discussion with some of the retailers and just need to incorporate that information.
Okay, what about discussion about having a full-time security guard stationed at Calabasas Civic Center?
We can come back on that one.
To council or subcommittee?
That would be at the pleasure of That would be at the pleasure of the council. I don't know if that necessarily needs to go to a public safety commission.
That's one I would note also. Three of the five of us put it at number one.
Okay, council?
Madam Mayor, the environmental commission's meeting on February 6th.
Okay, great. Peter, did you want to say something?
I was just going to say it's really a budget choice, so it really just needs to come straight to council.
Great. Okay, discussion regarding a lobbyist grant writer?
That goes to council.
Council?
I think that's, yeah.
Calendar, special events, teens activities, cyclovia. When's the next pre-meeting after January 8th? Would staff be able to put that together for the meeting after January 8th?
I think so.
Or do you think it's best to come back to council?
Can I make a suggestion?
Of course.
Or a comment?
Of course.
We're going to be opening the Calabasas Community Center in the first quarter here.
March.
There's a lot of stuff going into it. We have our programming for the community coming to us at our next council meeting, I believe. So we've already got a pretty good handle on what's going on the first quarter. So I think there is time to push that to a pre-meeting because it's not like we're going to be doing nothing in the first three months of the year.
Right, no, I was just thinking about activities, not just at the community center.
Oh, well, again, our next meeting, we have the citywide programming coming to us, which will have programming throughout all of our parks and the senior center and such.
Right, I think this was like a new events. So I just don't want this, I just don't want this coming back to the council in June.
With that one, Mayor, I think this is something that we would want to put on just as an initial discussion to get some direction. I think there's some ways to add a new event or activity, but it might be in exchange for something else. So I think that's something we would want to do early in the year because if we are in essence sacrificing one event or activity to do something different, the staff would want to know that early on.
Because we have to talk about Fourth of July as well.
Yeah, so what I would recommend is initial direction from the council, and then staff could work with the pre and then come back on what that might look like.
So council, pre, council.
Madam Mayor, and the next pre-meeting is April 8th.
Okay. But maybe we can call a special meeting for the pre because April gets really close if we're trying to plan events. Of course.
So this event, being a new event for the city, is going to be, it could be, have immense impact, closing Calabasas Road and doing things like cyclovia does. But there may be vendors that want to get involved, and they're going to need time to prepare for it and think about it. So it's not a last-minute decision. So if we don't work on it in some format or introduce the idea soon, so we have a chance to line up some of the vendors, if that's the way council decides to go, we may have to push this back till the fall because the summer might be a little bit too hot, the street. So it's certainly not, we can't put it together by late spring or early summer. So it'll be a fall item, but we have to keep that in mind with the vendors.
And Kendon, your idea that we'll have to swap things out, and that's a council discussion?
That's a council discussion, yes.
So council and then pre, a special meeting for the pre?
And this might even be something that the mayor's youth council, so we could even have a preliminary discussion with the mayor's youth council on some ideas so that we could present to council early on, too.
Except they don't have the authority to close the streets and.
No, 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 it would just be for ideas.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, and David, that's how David and I got some of these, was from the mayor's youth council. Solar panel and battery backup assessment at city facilities?
So Phil and I are actually scheduled to meet with the consultant next week. And then if we believe that there's a realistic project that is worthwhile, our next goal would be to present that to the budget committee. And the reason it being the budget committee than any other is really it's a big expense, and it may require some different funding commitments. And so we'd like to just move forward, again, once we've met with the consultant. And if we're ready, then we would schedule with the budget committee on that.
Okay, tennis and swim center operations update?
That one, so the wording on this is probably a little bit off. We talked about it being an operations update. As council is aware, we need to understand and have direction from the council more on some of the partnerships and how we move forward of operating the center completely. So I would say that this is fully council and not any of the commissions.
Okay, do you want to, David?
I was just going to ask, any idea when, I know we have a report coming, that will not include the tennis and swim center at our next meeting in January?
So this type of, this discussion is very different than what's being presented.
Any idea when that would come forward, I guess, is the question.
On the operation of the tennis and swim?
Yes.
Again, based on the priorities, it would come at number nine on this list.
Top ten.
Okay, do you want to do what we just did for Group B?
Yes.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay, let's go through Group B. So then I think this will also help staff with the commission agendas, too. So Group B, report on options of increasing enforcement of the CMC, including city to prosecute violations of the law to include use of the city prosecutor?
Madam Mayor, my recommendation here would be an analysis from my office to go to the Public Safety Task Force and then to come to the council.
Okay.
Because this is mixed legal and budget.
Okay, and?
And I would recommend that we consider merging it with the item number three on Group A because they're related.
Sure.
Do my, I'm not sure who recommended each one of these, so I'd look to the fellow council members here, but they sound very similar in their nature.
They were recommended at different times.
I'm really, this was a really important one to me that we've been talking about, I've been talking about for some time with staff, so.
Well, if we merge it, it becomes number three.
And Matt, a question to you, are those similar enough or does that delay that?
Okay.
Both are far enough along in process that it, they can be put together and keep the timeline.
So then they'll both come to council, Public Safety Task Force then council, or just council?
I'd say Public Safety Task Force and then council shortly thereafter.
Okay. Okay, discussion regarding gun violence program?
Matt?
Dave?
Yeah, I would say it depends where Matt is. We've talked about this for a while.
Yeah, we've had some ideas on that. I think the same process, Public Safety Task Force then council.
And I have a question for staff. Do you recommend, when it's like a Public Safety Task Force, which is David and myself, do you recommend including the commissioners from the Public Safety Task Force, or the Public Safety Commission? Do you recommend including them in any of our task force meetings? So when things go to their commission, they're involved?
The only comment there is that it can increase the logistics of those meetings to get that. You've got two plus adding five more makes seven, seven schedules to coordinate, but I think it makes sense in certain contexts.
Okay, so we can leave that to staff.
And Mayor, just to clarify then, so on the Group A, item number two, the evacuation routes, that direction was to go to the Public Safety Commission, not the committee?
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. What you're saying now is, in the event that there is something that overlaps between a committee and a commission, should there be some type of discussion?
Well, I guess like how Matt was saying that he was going to send something to the, he thought the Public Safety Task Force should meet first. I didn't know if it was productive to also have like two of the Public Safety Commissioners be a part of that meeting, just for efficiency.
That could, if it is going to go to the Public Safety Commission, I would recommend that.
Okay, that's what I thought, just so.
That makes sense.
Okay.
So you're saying the discussion on gun violence would go to the Public Safety Committee and then include the chair and the vice chair from the commission?
That's what I was saying, just because it's going to ultimately go to them. They might as well be hear what David and myself were talking about in the initial, or if it's like, but you know,
Yeah, that makes sense.
counter for.
Same thing with the other two items you're saying also, or no?
Those are just coming to council?
I think those two are just to council because that's about adopting policy.
I'm talking about, you talked about number three going to Public Safety Task Force and number?
That's council.
I thought you just said Public Safety Task Force a minute ago.
So my recommendation would be the retail security ordinance and the increasing enforcement of the code, including city prosecutions. Those two come to the Public Safety Task Force, then council.
Okay.
And the gun violence prevention discussion would be the combined Public Safety Task Force and Public Safety Commission.
Okay.
And the reason being that the other two are much farther along.
Got it. I understand. Good catch. Okay, city legislative platform?
That comes directly to us.
Yeah.
Environmental Commission Recommendation Recognition Program for Sustainable Properties and Green Business Program?
Environmental Commission?
Where is that?
It sounds like it's already been there.
Where is that now?
That's true.
Did the commission approve something?
No, this was just an idea that Mayor Weintraub had, and so it was put on the future agenda items as, really, I think, Mayor, your request was that it should go to the Environmental Commission. Again, it was just put on the future agenda list and so included with the groupings.
And the commission has formed a task force, a subcommittee, I should say, for this item, start to develop those.
Okay, so they're already working on it. So we can take this off our priorities? It'll come back to us?
We just label it environmental.
Yeah, or in progress?
Yeah.
In progress, Environmental Commission.
Okay. I like what you're doing. Okay. Business license registry discussion?
Mayor, on that one, I would recommend that there's at least an initial discussion at the council level. It might be assigned to a committee after that. But as I've talked with staff and council members, I think there's some difference of opinion of what that is and what we're trying to accomplish with that. So once we get better direction on what it is, what we're trying to accomplish with the end goal of that registry, I think it will help us know if it goes to, for example, the Economic Development Committee or if it just comes straight back to council or whatever that might be.
Great. Council discussion of a potential transaction and use sales tax?
I think that goes to council, if I could just speak up. And I also think because of the timing of it, if we want to do something, it would have to be prepared by a certain date. We might need to adjust the schedule.
Has the budget subcommittee looked at that also?
Yes.
You had the presentation?
Yeah.
Okay.
So Mayor, on that one, the only one that I haven't been able to have a sit-down meeting with, it was council member Bazajin. And so I'm going to check his schedule for maybe even next week to see if that's an option. And then, but as the Mayor Pro Tem mentioned, just like the California Business Roundtable, there is some urgency on this if this is going to move forward. And so we would need to bring that as early as January or February for a broader discussion at the council. With the understanding that we need to have that plan in place well before that first quarter to move forward if it happens.
And we'd have to do significant outreach on that meeting.
Correct.
And I would say that I don't know that any of us had that timeline of the time that we selected our priorities. And I would like to suggest that it moves up because it's a matter of urgency. As Kendon has mentioned, if we're going to take action, it needs to be done in February at the latest.
Well, the paperwork doesn't need to be filed until like July, right?
But there's a lot of steps that happen before that, and that's covered in the presentation.
Okay.
Okay, so staff will have the authority to move that up. Cannabis survey results, we're done with that.
Correct, we can remove that.
That's exciting. Take something off. Council position on the California Business Roundtable Initiative on November 2024 ballot?
That is pending at the State Supreme Court to see whether that's going to be on the ballot or not. We should have the answer for that by the end of February. So I'd recommend we slot that in for a council discussion in March, whether it is or not on the ballot.
Okay. Let's move forward to priorities Group C. Unless anyone has any further questions, I can't see anyone. Question's on, on B? No? Okay, we'll go through C. Issues impacting other communities regarding illegal exhaust on vehicles?
Could I know the scope of what that is exactly?
That was mine.
It's a little.
Yeah, so basically, a lot of times, sometimes you think these cars are racing, like doing excessive speed, but it's really like the vehicles have been modified with these illegal exhausts, and it's causing a lot of impact to certain neighborhoods. And I sent articles, and I forget at this moment because it was so long ago, a few cities have adopted like an ordinance so you can enforce violations. It's more to like support the sheriff?
Well, what does it mean, issues impacting other communities, like?
I didn't write that part. It was more just that there's, certain communities have taken action to prevent vehicles coming through their communities with this illegal exhaust. That is, the noise is so loud and disruptive to residents who live near, you hear it. So it's not like a huge priority, but it's just like a quality of life issue that, that's why it's on Group C.
Well, I don't mind giving.
I think it's a good Public Safety Commission.
I was going to say.
You know what, I think you might be referring also to when they're doing the donuts?
Yes.
At night, particularly in the summer, but now it's all the time.
Right.
Exhaust from that.
Yes.
Because it's not just one person, it's a group, and there's motorcycles that follow. I'd like to see this on there.
Okay, so Public Safety Commission?
That'd be great.
Or alternatively, it could be the Environmental Commission because a noise ordinance is an environmental concern?
Or task force from both together?
I'm just thinking, we're putting a lot on public safety already and.
ED, ED. That's really what we're talking about. Noise issue is public safety a little bit, but the ED is also a part of it.
Phil and Kendon?
So consensus to have that.
Well, what do you think?
So Mayor, I understand the intent of this. I don't see, I know it's just one other tool that our deputies have. I think there are other priorities that we need to provide with our sheriff's department at this time. This is something I think we can sit on. I don't know if this is even.
Ed's right, though. The people doing the speeding and the donuts and, I mean, I guess it's more adding it, adding it to the tools with like the street racing?
But isn't that all preempted by state vehicle code statutes? I mean, what would this cover that wouldn't be covered by the vehicle code?
The environmental impacts?
The environmental aspect. But it also keep, let them know that we have an eye and we're looking.
But what is in here that isn't in the vehicle code?
Yeah, I haven't done a deep dive in this one. My understanding is there are some cities that have adopted rules above the state vehicle code that give an additional tool to law enforcement to combat this kind of activity, but I haven't done the deep dive yet.
It's reinforcing it, basically.
And Matt, I would say, and I guess this is just having an open and honest conversation. We're at a climate right now with our existing legal system in the county that there are a number of other crimes that aren't even being cited or prosecuted, that even though we give a tool to the sheriffs, they're not going to use that tool right now because they are not citing people for more serious crimes because of what's happening on, in the county level. So again, I don't know if even spending the time right now is.
So why don't we, let's take it off.
Okay.
Let's take it off and make sure that we focus on the street racing, which hopefully will. This was another one of mine, catalytic converter ordinance discussion in direction. But I had actually spoken to the sheriff, and they spoke to a captain at another station who said that this was actually a very helpful tool to them.
But since you put it on here, didn't state enact a statute, Matt? I thought they didn't just at the end of the legislative session last, this year.
They, yeah, they adopted a bill regarding helping to reduce catalytic converter theft. Again, I'm not sure of the details of what the state's done. I know some cities have adopted ordinances.
I don't mind keeping it here, but if the state's already got a statute, that's usually a stronger tool than an ordinance. But I, you know, I don't know if there's any overlap or if it's totally preempted or what.
And I'd like to propose an idea. I mean, I think we're looking at a number of ordinances that may not have the teeth we're looking for, that's been stated here, that the state law really is what's going to govern. But we can do something in this area by perhaps sponsoring a program more often for engraving catalytic converters for protection. I know the sheriff's department has them, but they're not always in our area. They sell out really quickly. Maybe instead of writing an ordinance, we can help people proactively by sponsoring something like that.
Good idea.
Should we throw that to a committee for their discussion and maybe include that possible recommendation and see where it comes back to us?
I think the sheriff would be really supportive of us. They would probably help us organize another one, so.
But we can't make a decision here other than to agendize it.
Right. Right.
So we, that's why I'm saying, kick it to a committee and get their recommendation.
Accomplishing that might be kick it to the Public Safety Task Force to work with staff. Depending on the budget cost there, that may be within the city manager's existing authority that he could decide on his own to do.
Okay.
Sounds good, right?
Yeah.
Public Safety.
Census on that, it goes down to Public Safety?
Task Force.
Task Force.
Okay. Development Code update regarding green lead standards?
Would that be something that would go to the Environmental Commission, or Sustainability Task Force, or I know there was discussion, I heard comments about the entire development code? Two different items. This was an older one that I put forth. We have our own green building code here in Calabasas. The California State Green Building Code came out and is now state law. So, in our Building and Safety Department, we're enforcing two simultaneous and parallel green building codes. We don't really need to. So that was this item, what I think council member Shapiro is referring to is the discussion of tightening up our development code for an objective building standard that would allow enforcement better than our current code. Two different items. This one here, again, it's, I think this is more of a housekeeping item, but that's really up to our Building and Safety Department. And I'm not sure which committee we would, or commission we would kick that to.
There are some options on the lead standards to go, still go above the state minimums in the course of making our code at least not be inconsistent with the state. It may be wise for the Environmental Commission to provide a recommendation to the Planning Commission to then recommend to the council.
I think that would be a good choice. And just to be clear, the lead standards that we reference in Calabasas Green Building Code are lower than the California State Green Building Code requirements now. That's why it's out of date, it just needs to either be updated or removed. So, environmental and then planning.
I think that sounds great.
Good. Roundabout at the intersection of Los Virginus Road and Thousand Oaks Boulevard?
This has been on the list for 12 years.
Yeah.
Literally.
So, council, we're really at a standstill on this one, so we do not have, initially we had design money to move forward on this project with the Green Street project that is currently underway. If you remember, we had to modify that project, and because of the cost, we gave up some of the design money to be able to actually do the work of the Green Streets. There is still support from the community, there is still opposition from the community. So it's a mixed bag. But right now, I would say that we suspend this one until we know further about whether or not there are design monies to move forward, and then we would bring it to council to determine, again, a greater community outreach, to gauge the interest of the community, and then present that to council.
Okay.
Can I just have one thing on that, Kendon? Which is, before it comes to council for discussion approval, can we also get an estimate? Because I know it came to us now twice, and it was, the first time was approved or going forward, and then it turned out the cost was four times the amount, I believe, of what we were told. So, before we're going to consider something, even if it is...
For design.
Designed available, let's get an estimate of the cost.
Okay. But this is pretty low or paused right now because there's no funding.
It is paused, just because of the funding.
Okay. Formation of Water Task Force on Equitable Access to Water?
Let me speak to that one just briefly. I really think, and I spoke with the mayor pro tem about this, this is something that I think we really need to work directly with the Water District. And so, if council's okay with that, we'll have those discussions with Dave Peterson and members of the board to see if we can create some, they take the initiative of this, of which we could participate.
Now, this is a good opportunity to discuss. So this is Group C, and even talking to Dave Peterson takes staff time. Is this something that you would work on now, or you would wait then, since it's priority Group C? You would even hold off on the initial conversations?
Fair question.
Just like, as we're trying to, I know staff has so much, I just want to like, understand the priorities when things come up.
I think on something like this, it's worth a conversation with the district, because if there's an appetite to pursue it, they would have to do, lead the charge on this. And so, even though it would fall under a Group C, with us having the conversation and with them determining if their board is interested in it and their staff capacity and so forth, it still might fall within the Group C priorities.
I have a question on this.
Of course.
Define for me what equitable access to water is going to be from a landscaping standpoint?
Yeah, let me take that one. So this was my item, it came obviously during the drought. Our water in Calabasas comes 100% from the state water project, which is fed from only the western Sierras, from Northern California. We don't have any wells or any other sources of water. Most of Los Angeles is also fed from the Colorado River, but we are too high in elevation to get that water, there's not sufficient pumping capacity to get it here. So we are very prone to running out of water in the case of a drought, and I would strongly encourage you to do your own research, but I don't think anybody's saying we're out of the drought. We're out of the drought, but we're not out of the woods, it'll come back at some point in time. And the problem is that we don't have, when the drought hits, it's too late. So, when we talk about equitable access, we're talking about improving the connection from the Colorado River here. The Met is currently doing a pumping station designed to bring water up the Sepulveda Pass to us, but the construction is not funded. So I really believe it's in our best interest to get a redundant water supply here in Calabasas, and we need to keep our foot on the gas pedal there. That's where this item came from.
Can I comment?
Of course.
I am all for this, and we've talked about it before, and I understand it's a phone call, Kendon, but again, I would just echo the question I think the mayor had is, that we're talking about what happens to those items on Group A? Are they then pushed back further by this? We're trying to get priorities here, and you've gone through this process, you presented it. So what happens with quick items that start initially with a phone call? Do they then take priority, or they move up?
Mayor, I think this goes back to what I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting is, we have, I'm sorry, Mayor.
I pointed...
Mayor Ex officio, pastime, Mayor. Apologies for that. Councilmember, we have a serious flaw in our system and our process, and in essence, we are a reactionary city. And we will never be a great city until we start changing some of the things we do. Most of the items that we have come to the agenda, don't come from the future agenda priorities, they don't come from the strategic plan that we've agreed on or the work plan, it's coming from outside, either constituent complaints, or it might be something that's pushed upon us by another agency or so forth. In this process of always being reactionary, if we're okay being mediocre, that's what we're going to be the rest of the decade. Is that, and I know that's a much bigger answer. I'm just saying, our system is flawed. If we're going to take the approach that you're saying, then we just need to say no to a lot of other things that are coming to our agenda and taking staff time.
And I appreciate that answer and understand that we've talked about a lot of this before, but you are having us go through this for a purpose. So that, again, the mayor asked that, and I'm following up on it. I'm not talking about the other items which aren't even on the table for us to discuss today as they come from outside, and I think that's a bigger and important discussion we have as a council, is, again, the priorities. So, just an inquiry, if one item on Group C moves up, then obviously, items get pushed back a little bit. So that's, that's just something we should all be aware of.
Correct. I don't see this pushing back other items. Again, this is a simple conversation and seeing if there's a will from the district to move forward on this.
And I'm sure there is. I would hope there would.
Yeah, let's hope. Okay. Request for information from utility providers on anticipated price increases.
I put that on, and I did not mean for it necessarily to be an agendized item. I thought we were just going to reach out every quarter and ask them for anticipated price increases so we don't get surprised like we did last year. So, I mean, unless somebody wants to hear a presentation, I don't think we need a presentation again.
No, just having the information.
So can we quarterly, the utility providers, can we ask them?
If that's the direction from the council, yeah, we can...
Because otherwise, we'd have to monitor it through the Public Utilities Commission, and we don't, we don't have a monitor up there for us. So I'm okay with this being mine, if nobody cares, I just assume take it off.
Take it off, but have, I don't think, it's not really a big item, just...
No, but it's quarterly, I would like staff to give a quarterly report and a significant activities report. And then if we find out that there's going to be an increase, you can put in there, or you know, the Public Utilities Commission approved this electric bill increase, whatever, electricity.
And again, this goes back to, again, the will of the council. So if we want to make this something that the staff is doing quarterly, I just need to know that, but it takes, it will take the time of other things that could be happening.
Not, not much time, it's five emails per quarter to our direct representative. That's all it is.
Correct, but that, I mean...
It's the same email.
It'll snowball. I mean, that's what I'm saying, council, is at some point, we have to really decide what's important. And the adage is, is if everything is important, then nothing is important.
Okay, well, it's more important to know that we're going to have a 10x increase in gas than to have it happen and then have everybody be upset around town. That's my opinion, if anybody wants to chime in.
And I'm not arguing with, you're correct on that. I think what I'm saying is, again, is if everything's important, then nothing's important. And that's what we're trying to figure out, is where do we dedicate staff time to do the best for you as a council?
I understand, but this is not, this is really not much of an ask. In my opinion, this is an email going out, but...
And if there's three council members that want a quarterly report, we'll do that.
This might be something too, that our Board of Supervisor or Assembly Member, I mean, they might have access to this information as well. So maybe it's not even staff pulling it together, but someone else pulling it together and sharing it.
And didn't the gas company already say that they have a new policy where if rates go up more than 20%, they send a notice out to everybody?
I think you have to sign up for that.
Edison is raising, I read Edison. Edison is raising rates, it's been in the news, and different income categories will see more impacts.
It's just sometimes, oftentimes, you know, residents don't get that information. It would be nice to have the city provide it to them. I mean, anyone could have gone to the Public Utilities Commission, seen that the gas company got approval for rate increases, or know that that was happening, but you know, very few people did. So, if there's, I'd like to have a quarterly statement from the staff. Could be nothing, nothing to report, I mean, but still, we'd have it.
Any further direction from the council on that?
You know, I may comment on, you know, when it comes to rates, most of the rate, most of the companies have long-term contracts, so if you're talking about, plus we have the Clean Power Alliance, which for our city helps a lot, and David and I are very familiar with that, and they have, now they're the largest clean energy company in the country. So we're very grateful to having them here and being a part of it early. So from that standpoint, at least there's some management on that that we can learn about, and I could be happy to report on that, and I've been doing a consistent report on Clean Power just about every council meeting for task force assignments. But so much is, and I follow it, you know, in business, the utility companies, you know, are subject to OPEC, they're subject to politics, it's so hard to forecast it. If we could forecast it, we could all make some money on it, short it or long it. But I'll do my best to report then on your behalf, if you want, James.
The problem is, it's not, I'm not asking for a forecast, or a request, or an increase or like that. Alls I want is what has been approved by the Public Utilities Commission, so we can see it coming, so people can budget accordingly. And sometimes, generally, it's going to be a small increase or whatever, something affordable, and sometimes it's going to be what we saw last year, which is just some people went without heat last year because they couldn't afford it. It's a service that I think a local government should provide to the community. Obviously, it needs a majority here to even do that, but I don't think it should be on this priorities list, is what I'm saying, because I don't see it as a discussion. There's nothing to discuss. So if you either want the information and the dedication of whatever staff time it's going to take to send the emails, or we don't get it, it's up to the council.
You know, and my suggestion would be, if it doesn't take a lot of time, we can try it a couple times, and if it turns out it's going to be very cumbersome and difficult to get and not supportive, then drop it.
Well, I want it, I think it's important, like, no one should be surprised by rate increases, but I want to be mindful of the process right now. So for, I do think it's important, I think tons of these are important, but I mean, I think for staff's perspective, it would be taking something off of A or B, is pretty much what I'm hearing, that...
No, this is coming off.
Yeah, it's just staff time.
Right, but from what I'm hearing is that there is not extra staff time after we get through our A, B, and C.
Well, don't we meet with the utility reps regularly anyways?
That would be a good meeting.
No, I mean, we could, I mean, we don't have regular standing meetings, if that's what you're asking.
Well, we know our reps from...
Just so the council is aware, one of the responsibilities of the new AC, the Assistant City Manager, will be outward focusing, working with the utilities. And again, so that's just, again, serving as our representative with those utilities. What I don't want to do, though, is start, you know, again, back to your point, Councilman Albrecht, you know, it's just a few minutes each month, we can say that about every request, and all of a sudden, then, once we have, you know, 400 of those, then we now confine ourselves to staff action on a bunch of small activities.
As a suggestion, when we have the new AC, and he meets with the government reps, can we ask them to provide that, them to provide that information to us? That as a city, we've asked for this information quarterly?
That's good.
And that we expect it?
It is, but again, is that what we want to be using our timeline?
No, I'm saying, staff's not doing the research. When this new individual is doing like external affairs, and he's meeting with these reps, like Marisol from gas company, if we say to her, can you please provide us quarterly? Like, we're not chasing them, they would, they'll send it.
No, I agree, and that was what I understood from the beginning. What I'm saying is, we're again now taking something from Group C and making that a regular duty of the Assistant City Manager.
But maybe nothing, maybe a zero, if she has enough to report.
Because I'm saying, the information's just coming in, like, staff gets information all the time, but it's not a priority. I don't really think this is a council priority, it's just information that we would like to see received. I don't think, if we have it coming outwardly in, then I don't think it's taking time. Like, staff's not sending the emails, they're just receiving it, and if we don't get it, we report back. Edison did not provide the information to us, you know, we've requested it, and we're not doing the work, someone else is sending it.
And again, if there's a majority of the three that wanted us to do that, again, anything that we're tasking staff to do is going to have to replace something else at some point.
No, but to me, I'm not, I don't see it as like, any work. It's just like, you get a bill in the mail each month, like, they're providing a report to our city. I'll ask them personally, I'll take it off staff later.
Why, what is, if he's not going to, if the Assistant City Manager's not going to do that, then what is that person going to do? I mean, you're saying he's going to be a liaison, or he or she's going to be a liaison with the utility company, that's like the major thing they're doing.
Not necessarily. I mean, it is rates, but there is a lot, I mean, especially with Edison, there's a lot more going on.
Well, I don't see a problem.
With projects and work.
If that's one of the duties of the new person, then that, then they should be reporting what they should be reporting, rate increases, shouldn't they?
I'm at the pleasure of the council.
But why wouldn't that person be reporting rate increases? Is that not highly relevant information for the community?
No, I think what we're having is two different conversations, is what do we want our staff to focus on? What's important to the council and the community? And where do we put that as a priority? That's what I'm trying to emphasize.
Okay, so now we're down to meet, they're already going to meet with the representative, now we're down to whether the staff member, it's important enough for them to send us a one-sentence saying that rate increases are going to increase, after they've already met with the person. To me, that's no work on staff's part.
Peter?
Yeah, I'll just say, I agree, we're down to priority Group C, these are lower priorities, but this was a list of what we wanted to take up at council, and we're not asking for a massive staff report or a lot of time. a massive staff report or a lot of time. I think, much like the water task force, the request for information from utility providers, if we're boiling it down to a phone call and a small summary, I think it's a great information for our communication department to be able to just put out there. I don't think we need to kill it. I think we need to ask staff to put in a very small amount of time to keep that information flowing.
That's all I needed, was a third vote, so thank you.
But I'm going to ask, if this becomes something more than that, if you see this as becoming a project, please report back.
Okay.
Okay? And I also think that maybe Supervisor Horvass Office, they have dedicated staff that is spending a lot of time on external affairs. We can ask them, and we all have relationships with that office, so we can ask them as well. Let's see, green procurement policy recommendation from planning environmental commissions. I'm not sure what this one is.
So, council, this already came to the council at one point. This was really driven by Councilmember Maurer at the time, and was a request that we look at a green procurement policy throughout the city. Council provided some direction, and then recommended that it go to the Environmental Commission. In the absence of an environmental manager, we haven't had anyone to carry that forward. So the real question is, seeing that it's number, number second to the last on the list, is this something that we still want to pursue? Is this still important to the council, or is this something that we remove from the list?
Did this not come in front of us this past year?
It did.
And then we did something, what did we do? Refresh my memory?
There was some comments, and then there was direction to take it to the Environmental Commission.
And have they, they've heard it?
They haven't.
Oh, they haven't heard it?
Yeah.
What's the status on the Environmental Services Manager?
Phil?
It has been a very frustrating process. We have interviewed several candidates. We've made three offers, and they have all turned them down for one reason or another. So we were back out with another recruitment.
So why don't we just put this one on pause until we get the Environmental Services Manager?
Only thing I was going to add, I remember we had one or two meetings of when former Councilmember Maurer said the Sustainability Task Force on this particular item. If we want to put it on pause, or we want to, whatever the council wishes, it was supposed to go to the Environmental Commission after coming to the Sustainability Task Force.
Has it gone to the Sustainability Task?
It hasn't gone to the new Sustainability Task Force, went to the old Sustainability Task Force, yes.
Do we still, we still need that staff person, though, right? Do you want to do, so when we hire that new staff person, it could go to the Sustainability Task Force and then the Environmental Commission?
I just, I would say, send it right to the Environmental Commission.
Oh, okay.
Once we have the person on board, it makes sense, right? Unless you disagree, or council.
No, no, I think we, unless that takes a couple more months. I'm not sure how long it'll take. But so far, it doesn't appear to be something in the foreseeable future.
I guess the bigger question is, is this something that still the council wants to see happen? Meaning, if it's not a priority, if it's ranked second to the bottom of the list, is it even sending it to the Environmental Commission? Is it something that we want to take the time to implement and then monitor and track going afterwards? And I know that's a bigger discussion, but, I mean, we see it's at the second to the last. How important is it to this council?
Well, won't we have a while before we get to this anyways? Can you tell us when A, B, and C, when you anticipate? We might not get through more than A this year, right?
Yeah, so as I mentioned earlier, Councilman, we probably averaged one to one and a half future agenda items per agenda each meeting, or per month, I should say. And so, we're looking at Group A and Group B as probably our possible.
Maximum.
Yeah, part of Group B, of what we can accomplish this year.
Once we finish A and B, let's come back and go through.
Yeah.
You know, we can see where we're at. So my recommendation is just put it as a pause for now.
Yeah, I'd like to support that. I mean, putting on a pause for a reason, because when we do hire somebody, and I've seen many cities have environmental staff members, with the background that that staff member would have and the experience, it would only be better for that person to work on this than someone, the commission or otherwise. So I'd be certainly, and it's low on the priority list, in favor of waiting.
And I'll join with that. I might say, instead of sending it to two commissions, as it appears, it might be better, or a better fit for the Sustainability Task Force. And Kindon, you just made the exact point I made, two items earlier, but on a different, you realize that that was the comment I made also.
Correct, yeah.
It's a, what's a priority, but, and everything takes time. I agree, I understand, we've talked about it. That's all.
What about council review discussion of current resolution number 2003-946 regarding discretionary accounts?
Dead last. And look, everyone put it, like, almost last.
I concur with James.
Even if we did, it was not going to make a difference.
I don't even know what this item is, what the, what people wanted to discuss with it.
This came up in the protocols meeting, actually. So we have a resolution that is 20 years old, that governs our discretionary expenditures. The old resolution allows, I shouldn't tell you this, allows for staff to hire, or council to hire staff under their discretionary funds, which I wouldn't recommend because of the hiring restraints and rules and things like that. But, so please don't. But it does.
Before we even think about that.
Yeah.
There's significant legal risk there, too.
Again, so it is an outdated resolution, but again, if it's not a priority, we don't need to make any changes at this point.
Are we taking it off? Is that what you're saying?
At the pleasure of the council on this.
I think we should, I mean, take it off or discuss it when we go over protocols, if it's in there. My recommendation is move that under protocols, when we have that discussion.
Okay.
If it's a protocol, because it's not a priority.
Yeah, and we haven't really gone through that at the protocol, so it would not be with the protocols that are agenda item number one today. It would be a future item for the protocols committee to discuss.
I'm not, I, as I said, I concur with James on that one. I think if there's an issue related, that Kindon and Matt could clarify, if it's something that doesn't fit, such as our ability to hire people, things like that, a minor edit like that, that's something that's just come to us on consent, if that makes sense.
Got it. Thank you, Councilor. I think that'll be helpful to solve that, one or two minor, clear, takes a knee to the resolution.
And then, Kindon, does this, what we just did, does that help you when an item comes up? For example, airplane noise, how, how does that factor in to the workload and the priorities of the council? So if you can just discuss that for a minute?
Yeah, so that's a wonderful example. And as I've talked with Michael McConville on that, and also with Matt, we'd like to bring that back to council, maybe even a closed session, because as some other cities have taken legal action, we just need to understand how in-depth the council wants to go on this. If it is going to proceed legally, I think we need to know that. If it's not, then we need to know that. It's really two different paths on that. And that will help us understand the, kind of the time that would be needed to address that item.
I guess my question also is, as council, we get emails on a variety of issues, and we forward them to staff for help. How do you decide what questions from the community? And what, say, two council members are so passionate about, you know, one issue in the community, but the other three have no idea it's going on. How does staff allocate their time to respond to these, like, hot issues? That might not be hot for everyone, but, like, if you can just elaborate on that as we're going through this.
Yeah, thank you. And this is one of the things that Phil and I have been talking about. How do we prioritize those, those items that come from the community or other groups that might be interested in having the council take action? Usually, if it comes from two council members, then I know right away that's important. And so if I find, at first, can I plug that into one of the existing committees? And if there isn't an existing committee, I really need direction from the three members of the council. If there's an existing committee, it's easy, because I can put that on an agenda or talk to those two. And I get a pulse really quickly of, okay, where do we need to go from here on this? And then, does it go right back to council, or does it, does it just work its way through the committee?
Council Subcommittee.
And those are items that are, you know, going to take up much more time. Most of the items that we're getting from the community are really just simple responses from staff. And it's clarifying information, or holding meetings that might just help people understand our constraints, or what we can do. And so those are assigned to the appropriate department to do that.
Okay.
A lot of those are just the normal day-to-day business, is, that we have to address.
Okay. And then, David, did you want?
I was just going to ask about the blue items.
Me, too. So you go.
And then, the back, the strategic priorities.
Yeah, we're going to talk about that. Yeah, so with the three items on the future agenda items list, the ones that came after we ranked, one simple recommendation, if the council's interested in entertaining this, is let us know, staff, which of those, if you want to put them in Group A, B, or C. We don't have to plug them in a specific number, but if you tell me, hey, item number X is a Group A priority, then we'll start working that with those other groups, that group. So that's one way to approach it. Then we don't have to rerank these and put them in a number.
Well, I think on, on the one about public comment on Zoom, because that was done under your powers, under kind of an emergency, the last council direction was to have it. So it needs to come back to council.
And that was, so I suspended it for three meetings, correct? And so we need to come back and have that discussion.
Agree on that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Agree.
We got to keep our word on that.
And 27 and 29?
But one more comment on that. I think that we also said that if this continues the disruptions, then we potentially would end it.
That's part of the discussion, correct.
Yes. I remember that. 27 is.
That would be the rewrite of measure N and O?
Yeah.
So does that go to a commission?
No, we're working on that.
My suggestion would be, we bring that one up in February. With, that'd be my suggestion.
That has a deadline.
Yeah.
But will it go to a subcommittee first, before coming to council?
An open space task force, that's why it says crowd basaging.
Oh, you guys are the open space task force?
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay. So then it comes with some meat. Okay, discussion of potential areas for parks. I would love to add, I would, I would love that to come forward. If it's, do staff even think that's possible?
Very difficult.
Not coming forward, but finding more parks.
Very difficult to find land for new parks. I think it's more of a discussion of, and I've had this conversation with Councilman Albrecht, is are there opportunities for pocket parks that might be beneficial? And then, I think the bigger discussion is looking at redesigning our park spaces, our existing park spaces, to maximize land that may be underutilized, and looking at new uses that are existing park spaces, whether that would be a pump track, or a field space, or something like that.
Wasn't that supposed to happen with that, with our consultants? I brought that up with them.
Those discussions were part of the surveys, and we didn't get data on that.
Because when I talked to them, they said they were going to come forth, or I talked to staff, they were going to come forth with ideas on, like, how the parks can be, like, reimagined.
To a degree. So those were, it was based on the data that we received in the surveys of what people wanted. But it, it really is going to be more on staff and further analysis on how to redesign or reimagine those parks.
That would be something exciting for our community.
Were we not waiting to see whether the $5 million is available for use for that?
I think Kindon was talking about, like, some of our current parks, right? Just.
No, I mean, for this item, don't we need to know whether we have $5 million available for that, or whether we don't? A grant.
Are you talking about the $5 million?
The appropriate.
That would just be for open space acquisition. That wouldn't be.
Yeah, that wasn't parks.
That wouldn't be parks.
Oh, you mean, like, an active park?
Active.
I could weigh in on this a little bit. I'll just give you an example of how this came up. So one of the residents I was with, we were walking, and it was about, maybe four o'clock in the afternoon, around this time of the year. And she said, we have, we were walking on the sidewalk, we have to walk to my house real quick, because the coyotes come out right about now. And there is a spot in this particular location, happens to be in Greater Mulwood, where there's a bushy area with trees, and there's no grass. It turned out that that property, I had looked at it with Michael McCon, Michael Klein, and this is about the park at pocket, the park pocket idea, that was owned by a homeowner association that went defunct, and now no one owns that property. And it's open property that you can just landscape it out and make a little pocket park. We looked at it on diagrams with the city. Haven't gone into it in detail, but I'm sure throughout all of Calabasas, there's some other little corner pocket parks. Doesn't have to be a lot of space where you can walk a dog. Another example would be Park Aura and.
I think that's all CPHA. CPHA.
As soon as you make the right off of Park Aura, and you make a right, gosh, I've tried that. Just can't think of the street, right in the corner on the other side, where they're doing the dredging.
That property's owned by Bellagio. That's private property.
Not that park.
I know where you're talking about, the lower.
Before, the lower park.
I got it.
Right on the corner opposite, right next to where they're doing the dredging on Park Aura. So it could be probably a little bit bigger than that, but it's nice to have them. If we make use of the property that's available, it's not expensive to do, we have to locate it. And it is staff time. It's going to take a little staff time, but it's not expensive. We don't need $5 million. We can do them little by little.
Whenever this would be prioritized, could we also include, unless it's a separate item, the consideration, and we've talked about this before, joint use agreements and potential other partnerships that we might help us utilize some park space or recreational spaces?
We're already working on those. We're already having those meetings.
Fantastic.
I think any opportunities we have for more recreation and, like, what Ed's talking about, pocket parks, I would like to move that up as a priority.
Yeah, there's a little grassy area that's right next to the tennis and swim, where that area, I haven't seen it, it's fenced off right now, where they've cemented. Just over that fence is a big grassy area in there that, I think it would be exciting to have these little parks. Everybody would enjoy it.
So would the council like to move that up to one of the groupings, or is?
Does it fit in it?
I think it's a great idea, but, you know, every time we have a great idea, we just move it up in the grouping. And I think we need to stop doing that and start addressing items in the order that they show up. I think we can prioritize urgent items, items that have a deadline, like a state filing or something like that. I think this is a great item. I think it's important, but I don't agree that we should just keep moving things, moving items up on the agenda. We need to, we need to set a policy and follow it.
Peter, I agree with you, but we've taken, it's not something that has to go in A. My feeling is, if you take something which we did with cannabis and take it off, it's in Group B, and replace it, I'd be happy with that.
I'll second adding it to Group B. I'm interested, because I'm interested where this, where these parks can go. I think as we're planning for, like, the future of our community, it's important to understand that.
To know what?
To know if we have any space. Like, Kindon's saying it's difficult, Ed's saying there's a piece in Greater Mulwood. I just, I have no idea.
Well, we could look a little bit at the booklet we prepared and see if any of those spaces are still available. You guys, we did an inventory of this many years ago.
I think that's so important.
Can you distribute that to the council?
The open space inventory?
No, well, the potential acquisition for parks and/or open space inventory, yes, I don't know what it's called, but, yeah, they should get a copy of that.
We're actually updating that right now. Do we want to provide the existing, or?
Maybe the updated version. That would be fine.
I have an idea that might satisfy Ed's interest, too. Kindon, when you're going through the inventory, is there a way to show what potential use? It's just, is it, it's all for open space?
No, it's got that. It's got, it's got a description of what it could be used for.
Oh, so then that answers Ed's question.
So, again, the, I'll send out the document. The inventory is from 2008, and so it is missing properties, for example, that Councilmember Albrecht is mentioning. It's missing other properties. I'll send out what's there, just so you have that. But it doesn't answer the other question about.
The time element.
Well, and it's not complete, it sounds like, either.
Just so you get an idea of what's coming, because they're updating it.
And can we include, can we include the property that he's talking about in Greater Mulwood?
No, because this has been appraised and evaluated by a professional.
Got it.
You can include that in the new one, but not in this one.
So do we have plans to do a new one? Because 2008's a long time ago.
No, that's in process right now.
So can we add that to the new one?
So Phil is working on the RFP to update. So, Phil is working on the RFP to update that inventory.
And, and we're looking for them. The inventory is larger properties, they were, they're more focused on passive open space. So, we can broaden that scope if you want to look for small pieces of property, and will they need to be acquired? And then, they will need to be developed with landscape of some kind, even if they're passive. We can add that scope on smaller properties to this.
I'm sorry, I got to object to that. We have a grant from the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy to update our open space, which will be $200,000, and I, that money can only be used for that purpose. So, as we start looking at recreation activities, I'm really concerned that we're going to have an accounting issue, that the state is going to have an issue with our dual purpose here. I think those need to stay separate, otherwise, we're going to jeopardize that $200,000.
Well.
And that $200,000, if I could add, is part of a larger, broader allocation for open space.
Correct, that's the first installment of our $5 million.
Correct, so it's important to protect that as open space funding. Which, not to say the Council can't separately look at little pocket park opportunities, but that's a separate process.
Well, I want to be mindful, just as, we have four minutes left of this meeting, we're going to hard stop at 12. So, I would really like to come back at some point to what Councilmember Albrecht's talking about and figure out. It's like, we have to be able to be looking forward in the city, too. And I think it's a great opportunity if we are able to issue a separate RFP to look at those. I know it's not on our priority list now, so maybe we can just talk about that at some, some other way. I think Ed's idea is really important.
Yeah.
And I think doing an RFP and assessing spots for additional pocket parks is worthy of our time and money.
I think the biggest part of it is just identifying it first.
Right.
We don't have to do any digging, we don't have to do anything, but just, how many, how many do we have? Probably the size of half this room, some of them. Not a big deal, and then we'll know better. Thank you.
And Mayor, Councilmember, I think that goes back to, I think, one of the final things that we need to determine, and this is on the presentation.
Oh, I'm looking at the, actually, future information agenda items. David just pointed it out.
Yeah.
If you look at number eight, this is exact, conduct feasibility study of adding basketball courts, soccer fields, or skate parks to improve recreation programs and opportunities. This is for teenagers, but it's for everyone, and that says in progress.
Correct, that's, that's part of our work plan.
And on that, Madam Mayor, can I ask that we change and correct item number seven to reopen the Calabasas Community Center? For future? Please.
But number eight, part of our work plan, but how do we go beyond work plan to, like, beyond work plan?
That's what we're talking about, there's two different competing documents right here. And so, we will be meeting with staff, I'm sorry, staff will be meeting with Council over the next few weeks. I know there's some difficulty with travel time as we start to look ahead for 2024 and a work plan. Again, the bigger discussion is, is are we going to focus on the future agenda items as our work plan? Are we going to create a new work plan? Are we going to keep building on the existing work plan? These are, these aren't discussions for, you know, at this moment. But again, to excel, staff only has so much time. And so, we just, again, not for this discussion at this point, but we need to know where it's most important to spend our time. And so, we'll be having those discussions a little bit more as we get into the strategic priorities and the work plan. But I do need to, I know there's a hard stop, and Ryan, I'm having, oh, there it is, it's toggling through now. I think one thing that we need to get final direction from the Council on is this second bullet point going forward. So, anything that's added in January, February, March, April to the future agenda items, that now becomes items at the bottom of the list, is that correct?
Unless there's a deadline, like the legal deadline, right?
Unless there's a legal deadline, or a majority voted the Council.
So, I would say unless there's a legal deadline, like putting an initiative on the ballot or something like that. I mean, that, we can't let that pass.
Right.
Or I think you still need a majority. I mean, hopefully, we present the deadline, and then you get a majority.
Majority, yeah.
Majority of Council, and an emergency situation would be the only other.
There are exigent things that might require.
There are, if I could, Phil, I'm going to put you on the spot if I can. So, Phil and I have talked about this, he's seen this over and over again in Glendale. Can you just briefly mention what happens when you have the future agenda or the priority list, and then it changes, and then it changes again?
It's very difficult to keep up with you. Let me take, for example, the, the pocket parks, that it's really important to get that, let's go out and do that. And we put it into Priority B. Staff is working on Priority A. That's where, and that's going to, that's going to take a year, year and a half for us to get through Priority A. So, if, if you think that pocket parks are that important, and they can't wait for a year and a half, then we need to move them up to Priority A. But I've got staff working on other things there. So, you will need to tell us specifically what, stop working on this and start working on that. And, and the smaller the organization, the more this gets, gets highlighted.
If you're asking me a direct question?
No, I'm, I'm saying to you, if pocket parks are important, they need to go up into A, which is part of our work plan for the next year and a half.
Right.
And I'm so sorry, but we all agreed that we were going to end at 12. I know, so, I know this is so important, but can we continue? We're going to have to continue this and the protocols, just I want to be respectful of everyone's times. We've been meeting since 8:00 AM, so, do you have direction that you need, or?
Can I just make a motion that we add absent exigent circumstances or to this Bullet Point B, the second bullet point? Absent exigent circumstances or?
Before we do that, James, I want to point out that we have this topic covered in the protocols as well, which we'll be voting on at some point when we finally get around to looking at the protocols. So, I don't know if you need a vote on this today. We can continue as, as we have been, and then vote on it when we get to the protocols.
I think that's, and this language is actually identical to the protocols on the way items come to the agenda.
So, let's wait then till we go through protocol, is that, okay?
That's fine.
Does that work with you?
It does.
Okay.
Hopefully, we can reschedule the next meeting for the protocols, maybe January.
So, protocols will come in January, but we're going to need time. Like, I knew this item would take, this item, we could have gone another two hours.
We'll do our best.
But I'm saying, we still have to fit, we have to finish up this item.
We'll start protocols in January, we may, may take two, parts of two meetings.
Is Council interested in another workshop to just focus on protocols?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And just that item?
Just that item.
Okay, but do you feel you have the information you need for this?
We have enough direction, you have to move forward, just based on what is going to go to a committee or a task force.
Okay.
And, or a commission, and what we can start working on, just based on these groupings.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you so much, everybody.
Okay, thank you.
There's no additional questions from anyone from the public? Okay, then the City Council will adjourn to a regular meeting on Wednesday, January 10th, 2024, at 7:00 PM.
Happy holidays.
And happy holidays, everyone.
Now, do we need to announce our?
Happy, happy.
Close session?
Yeah, the Council will also be considering a closed session and perhaps an open session at a special meeting to be agendized for January 4th, 2024, at 7:30 PM. Formal notifications will follow through the usual agenda process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.